The timestamp is 6:04 and I'm calling to order the Duncanville City Council's special meeting on Monday, October 5th, 2020. And for the record, all city council members are present in addition to our city attorney, our interim city council, I'm sorry, interim city manager, Paul Frederickson, and city secretary. Greg, if you want to call to order your meeting?
See here, my time is 7:04 or 6:04, Planning and Zoning Special Meeting with City Council via virtual Zoom conference for Monday, October 5th, 2020, called to order. And currently, all commissioners present except Commissioner McBurnham and Commissioner Rodriguez.
Okay, thank you. So some housekeeping, this is a special meeting, a joint between the Duncanville City Council and the Duncanville Planning and Zoning Commission. In accordance with the order of the Office of the Governor issued March 16th, 2020, as extended by the Office of the Governor, June 12th, the city council for the city of Duncanville will conduct city council meetings by special video conference. And this is once again, 6:04, Monday, October 5th, in order to advance public health goal of limiting face-to-face meetings. It also called social distancing in an effort to slow the spread of coronavirus COVID-19 pandemic. This is an open meeting conducted by video conference. There is no public access to a physical location. In the, we do not have any public comments for the record, so we will be dispensing that when we get there. So, recording will be made of the, of the meeting and made available to the public in accordance with the Open Meetings Act upon written request. So, both organizations have been called to order and we have no public comments to be made. So, item number three on the agenda, the city council will deliberate the following items, however, no vote or action by the council will be taken. So, we're moving on to item number three, A, Zoning Ordinance Update Workshop with Freezer. And representing Freezer Nichols, we have Daniel Harrison and Erica Craycraft. And I'm sorry, I skipped Greg Ramey on the staff side, our director, or maybe I didn't, Greg Ramey, our Director of Public Works is also here with us tonight, in addition to our interim city planner, Andrew Ruig. So, we want to go ahead and get started. I want to make an opening comment or slash observation that, as I've stated earlier, I think back in February, when we had this particular joint meeting, that the, from me personally, zoning ordinances, it's one area of the city governance of city council that I am least educated and familiar with. And in that respect, it's a very steep learning curve for me. And going through this documentation, I went back through the documentation we had from the February 17th joint meeting and looking at what we have now for this draft dated July 20th, there's an overwhelming amount of information. And looking through it and trying to piece together an understanding of what we'd have and what the task is before us this evening, I'm not quite sure. But, you know, we know that, I don't believe I'm prepared personally to make any decisions on things. It's going to be more for me of an input session to gain greater understanding into our zoning ordinances and to find out in what direction we as a council in accordance and in concert with our Planning and Zoning Commission, how we want to take our ordinances into the future. So, this is the, I think, if we had this long period of inactivity as a result of COVID, trying to get this back underway, and if you were listening to any of our city council meetings prior to tonight, you know that we deliberated a great deal on how to have our joint meetings and whether to continue with joint meetings. And we decided as a council that we needed to move forward with our city council business. So, we're doing the best we can and doing so with a, with a virtual, as we carry forward. Do want to, to comment, and looking at the documentation that we have before us, that I am somewhat confused in terms of how to piece it all together. And I'll say, I'll try to elaborate just a bit on that. Looking at some of the pages where there are some indicators of what zone or what ordinance we're looking at, I was trying to find where the current ordinance is and then going to the back of the book, you know, back in the page numbers, you know, up in the eighties, nineties, and hundreds, trying to gather, put together the graphics of what I see in the early pages with the pages in the back of the book, I see disconnects. And so, what I'll be looking for tonight, for me personally, is to try and find out how this has been assembled by Freezer Nichols and how we want to take this. So, I say all that, that I guess if I were to capsulize it in terms of my comfort factor with tonight, I'm uncomfortable. Don't exactly know exactly where we're going to go and how we, if we're going to be arriving in any decisions at all, or if it's strictly more education and more of an understanding of the zoning ordinances we have and what we'd be looking for in the future. So, I just wanted to open with that. I see Councilmember Jameson, I saw your hand. Would you like, you have some comment, please?
Yes. I talked to the city ma, the city manager about it last week. I believe that this book has been put together incorrectly. The codes should have, the existing codes as they are today should be printed. And any changes or proposed changes should be in red so that you know the difference and what is there and what is being proposed. And anything that should be deleted should have a line through it. But everything that is going to have a change one way or the other, or we're discussing, should be printed. For understand that all of us in this meeting, and particularly the council, we have many areas that we look into. And for us to know the existing code is impossible. So, it needs to be printed first. And then, any proposed changes need to be in red so we know what it is you're proposing. And if you're proposing that we delete it or remove it, then you put a line through it. And I think that it would help not only the mayor who's told you that it's overwhelming, but all of us. And I have been on a code change before meeting. The book was bigger, and that's how it was presented. So, it was clear what is existing, what it is you want to change, and which to jest or move. And then, we make a decision. And I use as an example, page 27, where you're talking about boarding house standards, and you're acting like we have boarding house. We don't have boarding house. So, and you've got discuss whether additional standards are needed, are needed. No one said that we were taking this to begin with. So, the whole book going through it is very confusing. We never said we were taking boarding house standards, that we were going to do boarding houses. And I don't know, what is your blue supposed to mean? We've always had it with black ink and red ink lines. I've been told that blue in some instances means that there's a, what did you say, Mayor?
A link.
A link to it, a link to it. There's no link to this. So, it's very confusing. And we need the whole code as it is today. So, we'll see what it is that you're proposing. And there's no confusion, no ambiguity. But we know what you're talking about. So, a very simple, no, we're not doing that would be easy. But this is confusing. And I would suggest that, and I don't know, you know, like about tonight, but the meetings that we have coming forward, that this book is changed. And don't send us back and forth to look up the code, to see what it is, and then come back to this. That's ridiculous. It needs to be printed, needs to be clear. Thank you.
Okay. Are there any other comments from council along these lines before we, you know, I am going to go to Daniel and Erica for some background and explanation, but I wanted to hear if there are any other inputs from council. Mr. McNabb, yes, I see your hand.
Thank you, Mayor. And I appreciate y'all's concerns and stuff. And I know it's a process. And, and, and I'm kind of like you, I'd like to hear from Daniel and Erica in terms of the process and, and do it. And that's part of the reason why we have them here. So.
All right. Any other, Mr. Cooks, yes, I see your hand. Thank you.
Yeah, no, I guess I wanted to just wait and see what the consultant had to say about it today. And, and then I'll just kind of reserve a comment to Dan. I did go through it, but I'll just kind of wait and see the information, how they're going to present it today before I have any final thoughts on it.
Okay. Any other comments from council? Seeing none. Greg, Greg Zoka, any, any inputs from, from your side before we get some questions answered from Daniel and Erica?
No, I think proceed on with their presentation, and they can elaborate on the, the subject matter and, and give the guidance of where they're planning on going with this.
Okay. Thank you very much. So, Daniel, Erica, you've heard our concerns. Can you enlighten us, please?
Yes, we can. Thank you for, for having us today. And we have a, we can either go through a presentation that sort of highlights how we got here to this point and why the document is formatted this way. Of course, we can take a look at doing something different and presenting that to you differently, if that's something you'd like to see. And what I could do is go through the presentation, and we can, we'll have some opportunities for discussion about certain items. But if we want to talk more about just, you know, how we got here, we could just do the very beginning of the presentation and then just sort of take it in chunks moving forward, if you'd like to know how we, how we got to this point.
Well, is the intent to start at page one and work through it, or, or what?
The intent is, we have a, showing you where we've been in the process. I'll start sharing my screen so you can see the presentation. But can everyone, can everyone see that on their screen, the presentation?
Yes.
All right. And then I'll go ahead and, and just go through this real fast. Just Erica and myself are here on, on the phone today. And so, we are the primary people working with you and been working through the process here. And what we thought we'd do today is show you where we've been as far as the process and how we got to the current draft, give you a overview, since it's been a long time, since this is a lot of information, and how are we going to know what's in the zoning. And so, we can show you the content overview. It is in highlight form to go through in, in one night because we can spend days going through the zoning. And then, we have just general questions after that content overview. So, we could talk a little bit more about just anything anyone had as a question. Then, we had some policy questions that, of course, we've been working with staff and P&amp;Z to develop the current draft. And so, when the boarding house was a good example of a question, when we get to some of those topics and thinking about including boarding houses, we had some ideas for that. But the discussion of, here's some additional ideas that, you know, through the process, there were still some questions and wanting council input on. And so, those are sort of how those policy questions were derived. And then, once again, the last action, just going back to any other question and answers, just some open discussion and talking about, you know, what do we see informing us of what would you like the next steps to be? Like I said, that that could be looking at reformatting, going on some, some different steps that we could take a look at. So, and that's really what the end of the conversation is supposed to be. So, so with that sort of being outlined, would you like me to proceed, or would we like to have a, have a discussion before jumping into the presentation?
Go ahead and proceed. One quick question, is the intent to go through the entire book tonight?
Just highlighting what's in there, not, not through the, not through the entire book. So, just giving you a highlight of what has changed, what are some of the highlights that we think you would be interested in, what the public would want to maybe have some input on. Because one of the, where we're going af, after this, and, and once we get the document in a format that you're in agreement with, you know, we see the next step as going to the public to say, you know, this is, you know, not the final draft, but this is, this is close to where we're heading. Let's have some public in, more public input because we've already had some at the beginning of the process to give some people something to provide feedback on. So, that's where we would be going with that.
Yeah, another example that I have some concern over is food trucks. I think it was just maybe two, maybe three city council meetings ago, that this, the food truck question was posed to council during a briefing section by, by Greg Ramey, our Public Works Director. And we had a lot of discussion this for council with some questions. And Greg said, you know, we're looking for input. So, he got a lot of input. And then, lo and behold, there's a piece on food trucks in here, which I don't see that it addresses any of the things that we as a council asked for more input and education on from the input that we, we gave Mr. Ramey. So, there's another piece of a disconnect that, that I saw going through here.
Yeah, because one of the things that we want to point out was, you know, when we get to food trucks, and yeah, so if it was a few weeks ago, it wouldn't be in the current draft. Because one of the policy directions we would like to know is, is zoning the realm where you'd like to regulate food trucks? Because we can regulate it through other ordinances and things of that nature. Or do we want to see food trucks be regulated in the zoning? Because we can regulate food trucks, but we could also regulate things as food truck parks. So, is that something that wants to live in the zoning, or is that something that the council feels is probably better not in the realm of zoning and handled by, by a separate ordinance? Because when we were drafting this a while ago, when the discussion of food trucks came up, you know, there was thought, you know, the city was developing some standards. And we were still trying to think of what way the city wanted to approach that. But that's why we would want to seek council's opinion. Is zoning the realm where you want to regulate that or to have a separate ordinance for that?
Okay.
So, those are some of the higher level questions that we're looking at.
So, why don't you go ahead and get started and proceed. We'll, we'll see how it works out as we go.
Mayor, Mayor, can I ask a question? It's Monty Anderson, Council.
Yeah, go ahead, Monty.
I'm just curious, I mean, how many, I know I was traveling, one of the times we had one of these public meetings, but how many public meetings have we had on this? Because I think it's really not right to go to the public when we've all gone through this and it's ready to go for, for a vote. I mean, I'm wondering why the public is not more involved, you know, in this process here.
Erica, do you want, do you want to highlight the, the public involvement we've done so far in there?
Sure, I am.
I just need to know how many, how many, how many ti, how many times have we met with the public and what kind of, I mean, how many times?
At the, sorry, you know, at the beginning of our process, which was back in, I think, February 2018, we had a series of stakeholder interviews where we got some, some feedback at that time. And then, we also had a community open house. And we had a community online survey. Those were the main community-wide outreach efforts with the idea being, we would reach out to the public at the beginning to get some initial input. And then, again, the end, once we had a draft for them to provide feedback on. And typically, how we would do public outreach for zoning ordinance, since you recently adopted a comprehensive plan, that outlines a lot of the community's vision. So, a lot of the public input came through the comprehensive plan. And so, in addition to the input that we're hearing through this process, we're really relying on more of that comprehensive plan visioning document.
Comprehensive plan is not, is not zoning. And, you know, I'm a stakeholder here, and I never got interviewed. So, I'm just, you know, I mean, I would consider myself like more than an average stakeholder. So, you know, I'm, I'm like, I'm really confused a lot of this. It seems like there's not much. It just seems, it maybe it's because of COVID and everything else, but it just seems like the thing is disconnected.
Yeah, let me step in. And I do want to say that we've had, at the beginning, when we started this project, we've had stakeholder input, and we had some interviews. You were on council at the time. And we've had some meetings with council, joint meetings with P&amp;Z. COVID has done a disservice to this process because we should have probably been much further along about, you know, when we were in February, we've had good input. Mayor, I think the issue is, we're really having to restart this in a way. And so, I know it's somewhat frustrating because we're having to come back since we haven't met since February. So, the idea tonight is to reintroduce this back to, with the city council and with the Planning and Zoning Commission to restart this. I think we've had some good comments, if we need to be able to highlight sections of the code a little bit better, is there's an indentment or what have you. But this book is one that we've been using since the beginning. Certainly make, we can make improvements to it and highlight those areas of the code. But part of the process right now is to restart this and to get it going again. February is a long time since we've met last time to go. So, I know it hasn't been on the front burner, but this was the only way for us to get started again and review these items. These are major, these are policy items that are being highlighted in the book. So, I'm not necessarily arguing that we don't want to put in here a little bit more specificity when it comes to the codes and what's being changed in the codes. But this is the necessary step to restart this. And, you know, we may be, we may be hitting ground that we've already covered, Councilmember Anderson. And some of those meetings, you may not have been able to attend, which I understand. I think this is going to be, in our way, looking at a restart for this process.
I want to say that when you talk about that this is the book, this is the book that we've used this year in this process. But in the past, they have been more comprehensive. You've had the existing code and the changes that are being suggested or proposed.
Understood. Nichols, this is the book we would use. But again, I understand what you've made, and we most certainly can look at adding those features to this moving forward.
So, there's an aspect of what you just said, Paul, that I, that I appreciate. And I, I agree with in terms of a restart, because it has been such a long time since we've met. And the memory factor, I think, is gone. So, looking at this from ground zero, if this is a restart, I think we're going to be, I'm going to be much more comfortable knowing that we're, we're starting over rather than this actually being continuation, because there's been so much time and so much information and so much memory lost since February, first met about this. So, looking at it in that perspective, I can better understand what we're going to be doing tonight as a restart. And looking at this book as a primer, if you will, for where we need to go. And I think that Councilmember Jameson's comments about its, its format have merit, because what we have, what we're changing, and where we want to go, those three pieces need to be somewhat clearly delineated. So, in the future, as I said, taking, as you said, Paul, looking at this as restarted, ground zero, moving forward, we have an opportunity to make this more comprehensive and more understandable in accordance with the comments being offered tonight to Freezer Nichols. So.
And let me, and let me, to answer Councilmember Anderson's point, which is, we'll take it too, you know, we, we do plan to come back to the public. This is not anywhere near the point of saying that this is ready for adoption. We're not there. This certainly needs to go back in front of the, the community. And obviously, we have in two weeks from today, another meeting scheduled, the joint meeting with the Planning and Zoning Commission and the city council, that we need to go, you know, again, continue with this process. But I, I think a major feature would be having that input from the community after P&amp;Z and the city council had a chance to deliberate on some of the finer policy points in this document.
I agree. Thank you very much. Okay. All right. Daniel, I think, why don't we go ahead and, and press on. And looking at it from that perspective, what Paul just explained, I think is probably a restart for us. So, we can take it from there.
Okay. All right. Next slide here, just showing you a little bit on the schedule, what, what has happened. It was really three phases is what the schedule was laid out as. Phase one was the drafting of a diagnostic report. And that diagnostic report really outlines the public involvement that we had and the actions that were going to be taken to update the zoning ordinance. And then, so, once we got that document drafted, phase two was drafting the zoning ordinance and the map and working with staff and Planning and Zoning Commission to develop that draft. And so, when you see strikeouts and, and insertions in that document that you have with you today, that was from the previous versions that we had from staff and Planning and Zoning Commission. And then, the last time we met, of course, before today, was back in February, was our last workshop date that we had at the senior center. And then, moving on to phase three, and today is what we're talking about and going over where we are. And then, another joint workshop here in a couple of weeks. And then, the thinking was, and like I said, this, this course can change, was to have a community open house, not to, on the final document, but since we've gotten input at the beginning, at the diagnostic report, now we've drafted something for people to provide comments on, and they could see what that looks like. That's what the open house would be. And we've talked about before, maybe, you know, with this whole COVID time, maybe this isn't a traditional open house, and maybe we have something that's online for, for two weeks where people can, we can lay the information out there and they can provide us feedback on that. But that's something we can also talk about a little bit later. And then, after we get back that public comment, of course, more revisions amongst everyone here on the call. And then, after the document is in consensus format, everyone agrees on the changes, having the public hearings for, for that. So, that's the, that's how we have the schedule currently. Moving on to the content overview, what is in the zoning. And we can sort of talk about, you know, what we have here on the screen is, on the left side, those are the current zoning districts. We have 25 zoning districts. And then, there are some opportunities for some consolidation to eliminate some redundancies that we have in there. We also have some opportunities to clean up some of the, on the names of the districts. Your old districts are based upon whether that's a 3,000 square foot house. We can base that upon, more traditionally, we'd be doing on a lot size. So, when, so someone knows the, the lane use pattern there, they can figure out the lot size. So, there are some opportunities for us to combine these districts. And when, when we combine the zoning districts, we would take the smaller lot size and also the smaller required minimum dwelling size, just to avoid any non-conforming issues. So, you could see there on the screen, we were simplifying the menu choice of zoning districts that we have in there. And those are the residential ones that we have on the screen. And we're also able to do that for the non-residential zoning districts you have in there. So, focusing on, on scale rather than, than use as much. And so, we have a neighborhood office in retail district, a local office, which is, which is a higher, higher, higher intensity use there, and then a general office in retail district. And then, for our commercial and our industrial districts, where we can also streamline those and to moving those into, into just one commercial district and one industrial district. So, we're able to, to merge those districts. And we think that will be useful for the city and the businesses.
You know, I just wanted to add that the, the number that you see at the top of the screen, after zoning districts in parentheses, there's a number on all these that corresponds to the page number in your draft, in case you'd like to follow along.
With the PDs, we were also able to, we're just having that into one PD district. The mixed use one and the mixed use two, we do have that combined into a general office in retail district. And the way that we would address mixed use would be to show that as a use classification and not solely as a district. So, you could have the mixed use development in that district, and it's just not a standalone. in that district and it's just not a standalone district. And then downtown Duncanville district, that, that remains, that remains the same. You can see here is an example on the left of your current zoning map. And all the districts on this table here on the left side are really mapping those districts. So the question would be if we, I'm sorry, was it a question? We were on page four, but the zoning map does, there's not a page number for the zoning map.
Okay, that's where I lost.
Okay. Yeah. So, but, but we could get you a copy of the zoning map by itself on there, but it's not an actual page in the document. So sorry about that. But what you see here on the screen is your current zoning map. And like I said, our 25 districts are there on the left. And so if you wanted to know what your zoning map would look like if we use the new zoning districts, it would look, it would look like this. There is some, some standard colors for the zoning map that, you know, when, when a business is taking a look at this, these are the more standard colors that people would be accustomed to see. So it's just some map cleanups that we were able to do. And then also some more simplification on there when, when you're looking at the map. Now we can get down, we have some slides later in the presentation to discuss this. People would ask you, are you changing my zoning district? Are there any proposed changes for us to talk about as far as the districts go? And we have three. And so, like I said, we'll talk about these a little bit more, but ones in the downtown Duncanville district along the 20 frontage, taking a look at maybe considering that a local office and retail district. The second change is close to our by downtown. It's really expanding the downtown Duncanville district to the east. We have some area in there that would be a natural transition into the area further to the east. And so that could provide some good opportunities. And like I said, we'll have a slide about that. And then further, further south on Main Street, we have some local office and retail is, is how it's shown on the screen there. And what that would be, be in transition to is the single family seven. And that is operating more as a single family neighborhood. And so during the drafting of it, it was discussion along the street, you know, the access and things like that about keeping the single family nature in that area. So those were the three, the three potential changes we have. Those changes haven't been made and they're for discussion purposes later, but just wanted to highlight those. So you can see the, what the districts could look like on the left and then how the map would look like is on the right. So that's a very important part of one of the things that we're taking, taking a look at. Also, we have the permitted use chart. And so what this chart does, it's going to really show what all the uses are allowed in the zoning ordinance. And we're going to have those listed. You could see here on the left side of the screen. This one's highlighting residential uses. So starting with assisted living facility and going down the menu of options that someone would have. And then across the top, we're going to have all the zoning districts that we have in the city. So you can see what the use is and where is it allowed in the city. We also on this chart have a couple of other useful tools for everyone. Parking requirements are shown here. So it's easy to see, I have a business, I have this use. What is my parking required requirement going to be? We also have some hyperlinks in here. So if I was looking, and we could talk about boarding houses here later, we have another slide for that. But if I was going to click on that, it would take me to where my regulations are for this. So once again, the document, the, one of the reasons of going to a new format is to create a user-friendly document where we can have it on the website. It's very easy for people to navigate on there. So, so that was one of the also thinkings of having a new document to do some of these features that we wouldn't necessarily be able to do in the existing format. But that's something, something we can definitely take, take a look at for sure. Non-conformities, that's something that when doing a zoning update, that's something we really have to consider. And when I talk about non-conformities, what we're talking about is when we update the zoning, there may be things that no longer comply with an updated standard. And there's three types of non-conformities. We really have uses. A use may be no longer allowed in a district. A structure may not meet the setbacks that we have listed. And then lots, they may not meet the minimum dimensional requirements, which can create some issues when you're trying to get a building permit or a CO or something of that nature. So when we look at these conformities, we have legal conformities, which just naturally occur in all zoning ordinances as they get updated over time. Because if you think when you originally adopted zoning and let's just say it's, it's 1980, zoning gets adopted, it's going to change and it's going to evolve over time. So how do we address structures that were correctly built, but the zoning has changed? And so stuff like single family, those uses are exempt. They continue, they're not even considered non-conformities. Other times when we're looking at other things that aren't single family, we'd be taking a look at saying, well, okay, now we have a non-conforming use. How can this business expand and, and expand in compliance with the new regulations? We also do have illegal non-conformities, and these are things that were built without permits that were placed in the, whether it was built in the setback or it was a use that was just, they just built it. Those are a little bit different and we can have some, some more enforcement on those. So anyway, but once again, the non-conformities are something that are naturally occurring in a zoning ordinance update. We provide some flexibilities for these, but like a, a structure may be reoccupied by a conforming use. So maybe I have a non-conforming structure, but I want a new business to come in. That can happen. Non-conforming structures also can be rebuilt if there's some reason that they're destroyed, as long as it's within a short amount of timeframe. And here we have 12 months. So, so if a new structure is built like five years later, then of course we're going to want that to be in conformance and be like any other new structure being built. So, so our non-conformities also with our uses, we allow those to expand within the, an existing building because they're not really affecting what's going on outside. Same with the 12 month of a non-conforming structure. If it's, if it's destroyed, it can't, it can't come back as long as it's done in a short amount of time. So that's sort of the, the non-conformities. Another element that we just wanted to highlight is we do have an opportunity for, for alternative compliance. And what this allows is some flexibility into, into development where we're going to take a look at whether it's landscaping requirement. If there's an opportunity to basically produce the same amount of landscaping and the overall site effect on a, on a property, then we want to have that flexibility to allow that developer to do that. So there's some opportunities for this alternative compliance. And basically what this, this says, if it, if it generally meets the spirit and intent and it provides the same level landscaping, for example, if we had a landscaping buffer that was required along the road, but maybe it's more appropriate to have it all in the building because all the other businesses along the area do not have landscaping buffer along the street. Of course, we can move that back and, because it's still providing that landscaping element that we're looking for. So we have some alternative compliance with screening and buffering requirements and some landscaping. And then also when we get down into the downtown Duncanville district, allowing some deviations to the existing buildings and redevelopment with, with setbacks that could, that could go to the P and Z on there. Variances is something else we amended. Variances, when they go to the ZBA, they do require a hardship. So they're, and that's in state law. So a hardship is required to grant one of the variances on there. And so we can't have use variances on there according, according to state law. But that's one of the things we addressed, but we do get questions about like, how can we basically make special exceptions, which the state law provides us to do, which does not require a hardship and a financial hardship. We could take that into consideration because no hardship's really required for these. And what we do is we spell these out in the zoning ordinance. So whether it's a dimensional standard that we want people to say, you can come to the ZBA for a special exception to the height or the setback or the coverage. We can allow for this and we just need to spell it out in the zoning ordinance itself to say, these are the things that we've predetermined that can go to the ZBA for a special exception. So that's one of the elements that we wanted to highlight there. One of the things that we talked about a lot at our meetings, and this came up a lot during, you know, our joint workshops previously, was how are we going to handle housing and different, different elements along those lines? We have some here on the right half of the screen, you'll see some of the use classifications, whether it's a community home for persons with disabilities or a childcare facility or a children's home, assisted living facility, chemical dependency facility, halfway houses, boarding houses. State law says we, we treat some of these differently and we have to have some special considerations for some of these. Others on this list, we, we can regulate on there. And, and that was the important part of expanding the uses in, in the use chart. So we could see what all these differences were and that we'd have definitions showing all these because.
Yes, but we need, we need to be more simplistic. For instance, the ones that are regulated by law, that there's nothing we can do about. And the ones that are not, we need to know the difference between the two and which one that we can stop.
Correct. Correct.
Well, it's not clear.
Because the, the thinking behind it, like for example, with, with community homes is to have a clear definition of what a community home, and it's with a person with a disability. And state law is nice. That sets this up for, you know, our, our list that we have here on the screen and says, here are the things and we need to allow them in all our residential zoning district. Yes, we can have separations between these. So, so they're all not right next to each other on a street or something like that, but we do have to allow them, them by right. So the thinking would be in the zoning ordinance is to show the ones that are clearly state-regulated, like what we have in community homes. And then the ones that we do have the opportunity, like you were mentioning, we can go ahead and say what we as a city think that these are the most, this is how we want to treat these moving forward, whether we allow them in this district or not. And so that, that's the reason why we need to have, have them all in there to say, these are the state ones that, that we're showing where they're allowed. These are the ones where we're going to, we're going to regulate based upon how, how they fit in Duncanville.
Wait, wait a minute. You're saying, we can say that we're not going to have these if they're not forced by state regulations, we can say we're not having these.
Correct. There are some on the list that we would say, you know, whether halfway house or something like that, you know, here, here's what those standards are. Yes, we're going to, and I'm not saying this is what is being decided, but SUP required for this. And these two zoning districts would be the only place where, where this was allowed. Maybe that's the answer. Maybe that the answer is it's not allowed. But with something like community homes, that's something that we're going to have to allow anywhere, anywhere in the city by right, but we can have some standards in them. Like I was saying, as far as like 1,200 feet of separation, those type of elements we can do. But there's some limitations about what we can do on some of these. Other ones, we're just going to need your input on, but we want to have a good menu choice. So you can clearly say when something's coming in and you're not having to guess, well, you know, is this a halfway house or is this a boarding house? Well, we want to have clear definitions, but for both of those, so you can easily decide, oh no, this is, this is, this is only a boarding house or no, this is, this is a halfway house and this is how we're going to treat it. So there's no ambiguity in.
Register with the state or whatever regulatory body it is, they, they have to register. Is that not correct?
They, they would be registered with the state.
So that would be clear cut. That they were either, yeah, looking at this, they were, are these the ones that are all state-approved?
These are, these are, when you say state-approved.
Boarding houses is not.
Correct.
Or at least halfway house, is that one?
There is not.
We need to know the difference between, I realize, because I've had them in my, in my district. I've had them and they've been a problem and some are regulated by, but the state knows about them and, and for the rest of the council and P and Z, if you're not familiar with them, they have people who check on them. You can have a boarding house that nobody knows what's going on in there. And like when we have older citizens, we start allowing people to rent, and they don't even know who they are. Things can be going on that we don't, you know, they could hurt them, they could steal, they could do all sorts of things. These other types of classifications that have state regulations, they have people who go there and monitor them and check it out. I've had several of these in my district and some were state-regulated and some weren't. It was somebody trying to make a little money.
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
I understand what Councilwoman Jameson is talking about. The, the, the thing is there are certified and regulated homes that state and federal law say if you cannot discriminate against those people. So certified homes are regulated by the certified entity, which normally are the state. MHMI have certified homes. So there are a category of certified homes. And that's the difference. And those are the ones that the federal and state law have already said, you cannot discriminate against these group of people. But they are certified and the health department and a certified agency certify those. And they do have supervision and, and regular checks from just a regular room and board facility that anybody can open up and just take people as long as they pay. So there, there are differences, but.
We need to know, we need to know, like right here, you know, parolees, that's not state-regulated halfway house that you have to have.
And, and I think, because I, I think where you'd like to ultimately end up is you'd like to see a list like this. And then you would like to see where these are allowed and, or where these, and have discussion about what zoning districts these are allowed in, if they're allowed at all. And I think that's where, where eventually we want to go with you to have that, that discussion because we've heard that the issue coming in is, is, is a boarding house is, is, is an issue, having, having, you know, whether it's all these people living here. Maybe they're, you know, for construction or something like that. And we have a lot of people living in a house in a single family neighborhood, or maybe it's for schooling or something like that. So we need to have a good list that we think addresses what your needs are. And we need definitions for those. We can use some state definitions for those as well. But once again, we, we go back to, we need a list and we need good definitions. And then of course, we just need to know what the state allows us to, to regulate as far as zoning.
That should have been presented here so that we would know the difference. I don't know if everybody knows this, but we even have an apartment complex here that is in.
As far as which ones need to be allowed by rights, to my knowledge, only the first one, the community home for persons with disabilities that legally has to be allowed by right in any residential zoning district. The other ones, you don't necessarily have to allow anywhere. The ones that we have included like halfway house and boarding house, right now we have those in the draft as SUP. So that would come to you, you could decide whether that's right for Duncanville or not. But we, we can take a closer look at those.
But we can do that anyway.
Well, you just answered my question, Erica, because Daniel said it real quick and it was that those, that two-word phrase by right. And I was going to ask which of those, which of these housing and care types are required to exist by right? And which do we have the option to say, no, we prefer not? So what, you just clarified, Erica, that the only one that we must allow is people with disabilities and all the others is an optional for us to decide.
Correct.
Very good. Very good. All right.
That, to be clear in the beginning.
Okay.
And, and so, so one option is if, you know, the, the other option we can do is not even have these listed in the, in the zoning ordinance as well, and then just have those treated as new use that comes in. in the, in the zoning ordinance as well, and then just have those treated as new use that comes in. And then you would see that case as it comes through the, the rezoning process or the zoning amendment process on there. So that could also be one strategy to address what we have here on the screen. Okay. Next slide, we did have, I think we probably don't, well, we, we could talk about this, but you know, just the boarding house standards, because I, I think we, we've covered this, but what those were just unlicensed. They're housing for four more unrelated people, so this is not really a licensed situation where, where someone's getting a state license for anything. Eric already mentioned this would be required under an SUP in the, in the current draft, how we have that. But we could have additional spacing standards for these, minimum bedroom and living requirements. So we could have standards for these, since these aren't really state, state regulated. So there's if, if we want to have it in the zoning ordinance and we want to have our approach outlined before something comes to us, we can do that. Or like I was saying, the other approach could be, you know, sort of taking a look at it when someone wants to, wants to do it on there. Short-term rentals was something else that was during the diagnostic evaluation was mentioned. How we would do short-term rentals like Airbnb, whether you're requiring to obtain a permit from the city. You must be the owner of the property. We can set up standards that they don't have any outstanding issues with the property. An annual report of, you know, the rentals be submitted to the, to the city. Proof of paying the hotel occupancy tax, making sure that people have proof of insurance. And then with a short-term rental, basically registration, the city can reserve the right to remove properties from the registry. So that would be some, some options and also if you have complaints, that, that'd be another way. For, for reference, we have, there was about 17 Airbnbs listed in Duncanville in, in July, ranging anywhere from $27 a night to, for a small bedroom to $450 for a, for a four-bedroom house. So, so 17, whether you think that's a lot or, or a little, we do have some in the city. And so whether short-term rentals would be something we want to address as a city or not would be.
And how are they being handled now? How are they being handled now?
Comment.
I, I'm sorry, was someone else talking before?
I was just saying Councilmember Cook's also has his hand raised.
Oh. There, I'll answer your question real quick, to the best of my knowledge, and, and someone can correct me. But there, there's currently not a short-term rental ordinance or registration, so, so this, this would be a, be a first on there. So you would just open up the Airbnb and then that would just be the, there, there's no hotel occupancy tax paid for that to my knowledge, and so that's one of the things that the, why 17 is not gonna be a whole, whole, whole lot of money for the city. It, it is one thing about just fairness about Airbnb is paying the same hotel occupancy tax that the other hotels are paying inside the city. And yes, next other question, I'm sorry.
Now, how did, how did you determine it was 17? What, what, what information did you use to determine it was seven, only 17?
That would just go.
Signed on to Airbnb and looked at a map.
You looked at what?
Just to see what was available on, on that day. I was really just curious if, if there were very many in the city right now.
Oh, 17, oh, good. And then I know that in, in my district, we have one and the HOA itself is actually writing their HOA where they could not have it in a particular neighborhood. So I know that's part of the city, but just HOA is doing one where they could not even have one in a particular neighborhood. So just FYI.
Cause we.
Hey Mark, the HOA, what?
The HOA is writing in their bylaws where a Airbnb could not, a person could not do one in their, in the neighborhood for, if they live in a particular neighborhood for an HOA.
Okay, got it.
Okay, question for our city attorney, can an HOA create an, a rule that is more stringent than what the city would permit?
Yes, it would have to be probably a deed restriction. The, the HOA document has provisions for amendment to add a restriction. It requires generally a super majority of the property owners within the HOA to vote in favor of that deed restriction expansion, if you will. You'll see that unfortunately, we don't have a lot of neighborhoods in our community that have HOAs with deed restrictions in them or have an amendment process. So we're gonna see this, if we want to restrict this, it's gonna fall more on us than it might in say a newer community that has a lot of HOAs. So, and I'd be remiss not to say that court have not treated cities' attempted regulation of this area very favorably. There's a case out of Austin which restricts our ability to regulate this activity. And it's on appeal in the Texas Supreme Court. So we'll be on the lookout for that obviously as this moves forward. But you may want to have some standards and have a separate ordinance for this instead of, because generally they're single-family homes. You, you can have HOAs in, in an apartment, you can rent out a room if you have a two or three bedroom apartment as well. But this is something you may want to address with the regulatory, separate regulatory ordinance instead of your zoning ordinance. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, it's more of a curious question now that, when Mark brought it up, so thank you for that, okay. Greg, do you have your hand up to speak? Greg Zucka?
Yeah, I did, I'm losing it on the, where the hand up is on the Zoom. I'm not real good at this, I'm sorry about that, but I did have a couple of comments that when Chastity Allen was here, part of the, the concerns that I believe the staff was having with the old, the existing planning and zoning is the relationship between what the rules are and then what requirements are that follow, and there was a disconnect. So part of the goal, I believe from this document is to kind of merge the two together so that, as Daniel was talking about earlier, that when you're looking at a, the subject property that you're looking at right next to it are the requirements, so it, it simplifies a lot of the ordinances versus going out onto the website, finding a document and then having to go to another location to find something out or go to another department to find some information. So I think that was part of the drive towards this document. And then as far as a lot of the highlighted sections that are in question, a lot of them are potentially city impact wide type questions like the short-term rentals, the Airbnbs. You know, right now they're under the radar, if you will, because they're, people are just kind of doing them and there's no regulations that say they can't, but there's no regulations that say that they should pay their hotel motel tax if they qualify under that. So that, I think that's some of the questions that are highlighted in yellow that this document is kind of asking questions to many homes, these super small homes. Are, are those acceptable in our community? I think we could probably ask five people and get seven answers, so we don't know. So we, we want to try to talk about some of those and I think that's what this document is bringing up, so just a few cents there.
Okay, okay, all right, Dana.
Okay. So, so just to wrap up on, on the short-term rentals, 17 right now, is it something we want to address? Or, or sort of just, just maybe not the appropriate time to either address it in the zoning or, or address it at all? So, so just to have that in the back of your mind.
I think we'll address it now while we're, while we're here, we're already here.
No, I, I, no, I don't agree, Mark. We're, we're, we're restarting this thing and to start getting down into details of yays and nays, I don't, I don't believe this is the time for that. We restarted this process, we're in overview mode and to start making decisions. In fact, the agenda says we're not gonna be making decisions on, on these items tonight. I think it's not, we're not in that position to start saying yay or nay, what we do and what not want to do.
Well, I know, but the way he, the way he proposed that was that we're moving on like it's not gonna be there. And so please open it up later for us to talk about, more about the Airbnb. So I do like, I would like to talk more about it, just when I make a decision tonight.
Oh, definitely, I mean, it, it's like all the different kinds of homes, you know, we're, we're gonna be scrubbing these things down to the nth degree.
I just don't, I just don't, I just don't want him to scratch, I did not want him to scratch it off with the sound being nothing.
No, 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 we're not, not scratching anything off, I guarantee you that for sure.
Correct, correct, and sorry, I was just meaning, moving forward to the, to the next slide, not that we were, we were getting, getting rid of it, sorry about that. Next slide, tiny home standards. So when we talk about a tiny house, it's referring to a, a tiny house like we have on the picture here. These can be on wheels and so what we have is, you know, these can be moved into an area. We do have, if these are going to be used for permanent occupancy, so they're gonna be in there for more than, than 30 days in a 60-day period. We'd want the units to comply with the International Residential Building Code, P and X Q. They have standards for those and then of course, connections to electric, water and sewer. And of course, you need an address and the skirting that you see, the skirting's the bottom of the material there. You need to have that, the wheels removed and tie downs on a permanent foundation. So we could have some standards for the, for the tiny, tiny homes.
And those are currently shown as they would require an SUP, they would not be allowed by right.
Accessory buildings was something else that came out of the diagnostic. There is no permanent, no permit required if it's less than 120 square feet and 13 feet in height. Accessory buildings are prohibited in easement, so if I have an easement for something, I'm not supposed to put my accessory building in there. We do have some exemptions for accessory buildings associated for agricultural uses. We do have some, and we do have some standards that if, you know, if this is for an animal, that it's, you know, at least 15 feet from existing dwelling on a neighboring property. And then on the next slide here, we do have, we, we try to put things into tables, so a little bit easier for everyone to understand. So what this table is showing is if I have accessory buildings, if, and my lot is 10,000 square feet or less, 400 square feet in area is, is my maximum size of all my combined accessory buildings. The larger my lot is, the more that I get to have as far as my, my area of combined accessory buildings. And also, once I'm over 20,000 square feet, I wouldn't necessarily have a height requirement for that, just as long as it's not exceeding the height of the, the main building on there. So, so we have a, a table in there that really guides our standards for accessory buildings. Another item that we wanted to pull out as a highlight were sundry stores, these are your, your dollar stores. We talked about this at our last workshop, requiring a separation. We have that as 2,000 feet between the stores, 10% of the floor area being dedicated to fresh produce, meat, dairy products. This is gonna be really implemented through the SUP process. We did receive a comment to increase the separation to 5,000 feet, which is a little less than a mile. But just for reference, Mesquite's using 5,000 and then Fort Worth uses a two-mile separation. And then here's just an example of, you know, this is about what 440 feet would look like separating a, a Dollar General with a, with a Family Dollar is having a separation requirement there. Parking was another highlight we wanted to show you tonight and so parking, some options for creating permeable surfaces, so when we have water, when it rains or water runoff, we're, we're trying to of course, have some opportunities for that to get back into the ground and not necessarily drain as quickly to the street or to the creek as possible. So we would allow some permeable surfaces, wouldn't be allowed as part of the fire lane or the required parking, the minimum required parking, but after you met your minimum required parking, then the extra parking could, could be permeable as approved by the city engineer. And then that's really how we see that process moving forward and then their maintenance responsibility, of course, is the property owners. Also with our parking lot, one of the highlights we wanted to pull out was for existing parking lots. So of course, if a new parking lot's being created, we want that to be concrete. Existing parking lots can be repaired with asphalt and expanded up to 10%. So someone's wanting to do a little expansion to their existing parking lot as asphalt, that is, that is, that's envisioned. If parking lots deteriorate greater than, than 50%, then the entire lot must either be redone in concrete or they can still use the asphalt, but we'd want some type of aesthetic improvements placed in the parking lot, similar to the image that we have here of a tree with a little, little landscape island here to provide some, some landscaping within the parking lot. Outside storage and screening was another example of, one of the things that was pulled out of the diagnostic report that we heard feedback on as needing to be addressed. So screening is required for all outside storage, including cars stored more than 24 hours that are not, that are not for sale, must be a six-foot solid screening wall or fence. Landscaping, those type of materials are acceptable for, for screening. You can't have open fencing in the industrial district, but no wood or chain link fence for, for the screening. And then of course, if, if we did have a building layout that really had the open storage where it wasn't seen from the street, that could also suffice as the required screening. So here's just some examples that you can see on the screen about how some of that screening could look like that very last one, that's open screening, that would only be allowed in the industrial district. So requiring those open storage areas to be screened. Residential proximity slope, this is to control the height of buildings. So in our graphic that we see here on the page, you can see there's a single-family home right there. And then as far as regulating the height in our commercial districts and also our industrial districts, how tall can someone build a building? What this slope represents is a, a three-to-one slope and basically, as long as a building's built underneath that slope after a certain distance, that's how high the building can be built. And that's really to protect the, the single-family and, and the neighborhoods that we have adjacent to the, to these areas, but also provide flexibility for our commercial and industrial properties. Landscaping is another thing that was mentioned in the diagnostic report. People like to see landscaping and want to see the improvements on that. So this applies to all new development or expansions over 10%. And our single-family duplex and our townhomes, we, we do have some minimum standards just requiring two shade, shade trees or three ornamental trees on the property. All other of our non-residential, so our, this example of our businesses, we'd require parking lot landscaping and then also overall site landscaping. So 20% of the overall site would need to be landscaped for our non-residential uses. Lighting was another thing that was addressed. What we're doing with approaching the lighting is that this also applies to all new development and expansions. All lighting must be full cutoff lighting. And the example that you can see here is when we talk about a full cutoff line, that just basically means that light bulb or that light source is shielded with, with the light being cast down rather than creating a glow or really counting, creating a lot of light pollution onto the neighboring properties. So lighting can be done, but it's just trying to focus that lighting down and trying to avoid the annoyance of the neighboring properties being affected by those bright lights. Moving on to downtown Duncanville, just wanted to highlight the, the changes that is in the draft right now. Currently you have, in the current zoning, there, there are six types, street types that we have in the downtown Duncanville district. We've combined that down into three types that you can see there, core Main Street, urban living and general Main Street. One of the things that we did was we took a look at where could we expand the downtown Duncanville zoning district and moving it east to Merrill Avenue. And so we had an expansion and looking at this area here on the screen, there could be some opportunities for some uses, whether they would be coffee shops or some other type. coffee shops or some other type of things that were some some really natural transitions from downtown into our neighborhood to the east. So there were some opportunities there that that we saw that we could expand that district. Where we saw maybe reducing the downtown Duncanville district was on the far north side, on the frontage along twenty. As you can see, with with the new development going in on there, the question was, you know, talking at staff and at the P and Z level, there were, you know, the question is, well, what what is really appropriate there along the frontage? Along the south side, along Camp Wisdom with with the church, that use is probably going to stay there for a while. And would we have a sort of a downtown type development on the north side along twenty? So that was the discussion we were having to consider rezoning that maybe to the local office and retail, something that wasn't a district that would necessarily have a gas station or something like that, but would produce a a nice nice type of development seeing there and taking use of the twenty frontage. Downtown Duncanville, also, we we have, of course, kept the the frontage types and the standards that we have there that really affect when once you're in the downtown Duncanville. It's a little bit different than than your normal zoning where we're basing it based upon what street frontage we're on. So based upon the street frontage, that's really regulating your building height, your site design and your building design. And so these are just some of the examples that we have in there. So you can see what those look like. Just other recent edits, we thought you might be interested in knowing. We did add bail bonds as a business that requires an SUP and the general office and retail and the commercial district was one addition. We also changed how drive throughs are addressed before. Those do require an SUP and the local office and retail, and they're permitted in the general office and the commercial. But the way that those drive throughs are addressed, the drive through is really an accessory used to whether it's a restaurant or something to that nature. And so this is how it'd be addressed as an accessory use with 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 a drive through. This is also similar to how we treat gas pumps being addressed because we could have a grocery store. But it may be a grocery store with a gas pump as an accessory use example, if we have a Tom Thumb that has a a fueling center in there. The Hooga Lounge is one of the ones that we added as into the use chart. And we referenced the city's current smoking ordinance in there as the regulations for that. We did separate restaurants from being, we added some more definition in there that we have limited seating, which would be more you're going to the counter and ordering it, taking it away versus your regular sit down restaurant where you're having people seated for service. We did add a convenience store with a restaurant because those those are popular, want to make sure that we we address that. And we did separate our sign production. That was a use that we currently had and split that out into sign printing and sign manufacturing. And then we did add a use for for bed and breakfast, similar to, you know, we were talking about our short term rentals, bed and breakfast could be another thing that we see occurring. Other other minor edits that we thought were important enough to mention to you was wind energy. These are the turbines that you may have put on a house or something like that, not the big, big thing that you'd see driving in a rural area, just making sure that we have setbacks for those. We did add a minimum acreage. If someone wanted to do a PD at fifteen acres, you could do a PD that was smaller than fifteen acres, but it would need to be tied to the implementation of the comprehensive plan. So taking a look at saying, how is this PD implementing the concepts from the comprehensive plan? We also did remove the site plan requirement for multifamily developments being submitted at the SUP request and just move that to that site plan submitted at the building permit application. And then also, we deleted the recreational area lighting standards, since those were already addressed with the the lighting curfew. So with those, what we'd like to do is, and I know we've already touched on on some of these at the beginning of our question or beginning of our session with, you know, general questions about the format, you know, the the boarding houses, things like that. But what we'll do in our next phase is is we do have those policy questions. Those were some of the yellow boxes that we highlighted. But before we move on to that, were there any other general questions that we have right now? And then, of course, at the end of the presentation, too, we'll have time for more questions. But any questions right now before we move forward?
Yeah, Daniel, I've got some procedural questions and I don't know. It's actually not a question for you. It's more a question for for Paul or for Greg Ramey, or maybe even for our city attorney. And that is looking through each of these categories that you've presented. I was making notes on on some of them as we went because one question, one of my questions follows on to the other. Would each of these categories, as you presented, that we need to give consideration to? Would those go independently to P and Z? They do their considerations, they make their decisions, they make their votes, then the P and Z decisions come to council for our consideration and approval, disapproval of or editing of what P and Z has done? Or do all of these things come as joint sessions where the the two organizations or the two bodies, I guess is the proper word, the two bodies are considering all of this together or independently? How's this going to work? And I don't know who answers it, whether it's whether it's Bob or Paul or Greg. I just don't know.
Mayor, let me, Mayor.
Go ahead, Bob.
Yeah, Mayor, what would normally happen, since this is a comprehensive change, the P and Z would hold their public hearing to adopt a new zoning ordinance. And they would go through and adopt this document, whatever it turns out to be. And then they make that written recommendation to y'all. And then you would then consider holding your public hearing, receiving your input and voting to accept or make whatever changes you want for the final document.
But can we, can the two bodies consider these questions concurrently? Or can we, we as council not consider anything until P and Z does?
It it might be beneficial for you to have a joint hearing or a joint set of hearings to consider it. The state statute does say that you cannot act until you've received the written recommendation from planning and zoning to amend the zoning ordinance. So that could be done the same night. I have seen it done the same night over the course of my career. But a lot of times, it's usually done separately.
And
And that allows for opportunity for you to get their document and then have input from council because ultimately their recommendation has to receive council approval. So it allows some time for improvement in the document, allows time for your consultant to address issues that P and Z may have with their recommendation. I would suggest that you're not going to do this in one night.
Oh, definitely. Bob, I guess it's more of like, if P and Z is going to talk about tiny homes and lighting and parking lot pavement and so forth, and boarding houses and council wants to talk about it, too. Can can we have independent meetings of the bodies to talk about these things prior to actually having a hearing? You keep mentioning hearings and I'm going, you know, I really like to go over this stuff before we have a hearing on these things.
Yes. They can separately workshop tiny homes and parking lot improvements and process. And then you could likewise have a workshop about same subject.
But Mayor, is your question the better procedure, which would be having the joint meeting so that you can hear the input of the planning and zoning and the remainder of the council members as well?
Well, it's more of can we concurrently talk about these things and then have
Yes, you can. That's what we're doing now. Yeah.
Yeah, we're not making any decisions tonight, but I mean,
It was never meant to make decisions, but I think we would like to, if we do it concurrently, I think we could keep the process moving, obviously with the comments have been made by some of the council members.
Yeah, because, you know, looking at the various categories, I mean, there's nonconformities, community houses, accessory buildings, tiny homes, parking lots, I was just making some notes on things that each of these categories are very independent of things that we as a council would say yea or nay to. And I'm thinking P and Z would be going through the same process to say yea or nay to some of those categories as well. So it's like body A goes through their stuff, body B goes through their stuff to independently, but then we come together and say, okay, do we agree? And then we we come forward with with something that's agreement with both bodies. So it's more procedural, Paul, than anything else in terms of
Well, I I think when we started in this row, the idea was that we would ultimately bring everyone together to do this. So we're proceeding as I think has always been kind of envisioned that, you know, once the input was received and that the planning and zoning commission had their opportunities and then the joint meetings with both the P and Z and the city council, that we're basically in and moving forward with what was envisioned to begin with is have both of both of y'all meet concurrently and go over these issues. They're 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 big policy issues, but I think that also is more efficient than having them work in separate silos now. We're we're at, we're getting to the point where we need both of these groups meeting together to go over these issues.
All right. You know, it it it's kind of like, I know that we we entrust our our folks at P and Z to go through this stuff and and come up with their assessments and say yes or no to to each of those very, very, these, all these categories that 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 was presented to us tonight, which I actually, I'm just going to take a quick rabbit trail here. I really appreciate breaking these things down into those categories, Daniel, because now this book is a little more understandable, a little more that, you know, each of these things have to be addressed by us as council and P and Z. We got to talk about these categories independent and then pull them all together into into one cohesive document at some point in the future. So I'm thinking that, you know, P and Z makes their decisions on each of these categories of what they think is is correct. And my concern is that after all the time that our entrusted commissioners spent on all of those categories, that it comes to us and we as a council have had independent discussions and we override. And that leads to a disconnect between the two governing bodies, and I'm concerned about that.
Mayor Gordon, Councilmember Cooks and Commissioner Zelka have their hands raised.
Okay, yeah, thanks. Yeah, Mark?
Okay, well, that that was one of the reasons why when the other subject was brought up about the Airbnb, that it was brought up for us to have the discussion about doing this process, not trying to get a vote on it. So we have to remember, as we talk about this, is that we have to allow parties to express their concerns or conversation around it without proceeding as though it's going to be a vote. So that's my, that's my first statement. The second statement, though, is going to ask, while we're going through this process, let's just say if any one of these items come up to P and Z now, would P and Z then make a ruling on the existing? Or will they put that, or will they put postponement because we're going through this P and Z change, the changes or revisions? So that's a question probably turned for for the for the attorney or for the city manager.
Excellent question. Yeah, somebody answer.
If the application is filed today, it will be determined based on what the zoning ordinance is today. And if something gets passed and later becomes a nonconforming use because you've changed the use category or whatever, then it'll become a nonconforming use. But it would be decided based on the regulations you have at the time the application was filed.
Wow. And there's, there's no options there to to freeze that until this, because we are going through the process.
That that would be a moratorium and you're very limited to what you can do for any kind of zoning moratorium. It would have to be that the critical infrastructure has been destroyed or not available and and it's only for a ninety day period if memory serves me correctly. So there's not much of an opportunity to do a moratorium, Councilman Cooks.
Thank you. That goes my questions.
So that would, so then they would go back to that long, that one chart that Daniel showed about legal, legal nonconformities, where there's how to resolve legal nonconformities. So I understand that process. Yeah, I got.
And when we went through this process about twenty five years ago, we had concern because we had a bunch of smaller homes that were part of the along Main Street and over and in Camp Wisdom area that were small track homes that were built during war, during World War Two. And that caused a lot of concern amongst our citizenry because they were still occupied and how they would be treated as nonconforming. That's why you've got a very strange nonconformity requirement in your zoning ordinance, which I pray will go away because you have two categories of nonconforming, anything built before nineteen eighty and then nonconforming, it is a result of our current zoning ordinance. And it's been a problem for us to move forward in ministering our nonconforming uses. So thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, Greg Zelka, you had, you want to make a comment?
Yeah, I was just going to kind of elaborate to what's already been said that there are a lot of things in the in this plan that need evaluation recommendations because what fits in one council member's district may not fit in another and for whatever reason. And I think the yellow boxes highlight the fact that a lot of additional discussion is needed because the the impacts to the property owners present in the future could be very dramatic. So don't want to take that very lightly. And, you know, the paving requirements and the impact to the financial burden, you've got many businesses that are impacted with COVID and their businesses are down. But then they have to replace their parking lot, you know, how does that proceed forward that we're not making another burden on a business that's already struggling, but yet we're trying to make the city better? And how do we go through that? And I think P and Z needs some of that guidance from council that, you know, what's their vision of where we want to go? And that would help us, I think, and I speak generically among my peers, that that we get some of that vision because, you know, what sounds great for what we're seeing individually globally through the city may be a bad decision, if that makes sense.
Yeah, definitely. You know, I was going back to a comment that Councilmember Jameson made in terms of formatting. I I made a note like that one chart that Chad Daniel on on lighting and it showed the four different different light poles. And I just made a note, but do we have something that regulates that today? Or is that something brand new?
That that is new. So and we could get back to, you know, sort of talking about, you know, the best way to show you the changes so you guys can understand what has changed. And because with the existing format of your current zoning ordinance, so much has changed and moved to to different sections. Uses aren't listed out the same way as, because you have a long list of uses by district. And, you know, those are going to be all shown in the in the use chart now. So they're just in one place and they're they're easy to manage moving forward because now it's just one list and not spread out through the twenty five zoning districts. And so there there are some struggles if we if we do it, just here was the old ordinance and then here's like a track changes version. I think what we could do is also, I think, help help you, and this is just maybe one idea you don't have to decide today, is we could take the old zoning ordinance and tell you where that information is in the new zoning ordinance, because we really took it as an opportunity to say, because one of the feedback that we got was, you know, the current ordinance is is cumbersome. It's 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 difficult to find stuff. We 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 want a new new document. And so the struggle we have, just not not here, but in any zoning ordinance, is to show what has changed because to do a true track changes version, we need to start with a clean document in the format that 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 we're going to have. But one of the things that we sometimes do to do that is we can do two documents, we could do, here's your old zoning ordinance and here's where everything moved. So if you wanted to know when you're looking at the old R three and there's a list of uses, we would have a box on there saying this is now on page five and it's included in the use chart. That way, you could at least flip through it and see where all that stuff is. That way you could at least flip through it and see where all that stuff is now. And we also can give you, we've done like an equivalency table before where it's all like. If we just had a layout format of here's all your, here's all your old organization. And from section one, two, three on down, and then here's where it fits in the new section. So at least, you know, you you can you can track that because I I I would, I would say the way that we have it formatted now. Is going to be more user friendly for you guys in the long run. I would say there is, there is that frustration and great difficulty, though it's not a track, true track changes version. So you can go line by line to see like, okay, we had this one use and now it's now it's expanded. Or or we're talking about boarding houses or or was this addressed in in the old one? Um, but I think, I think it's important to know which ones are important to you. So we can identify those and tell them, tell you, tell you how those change on there. So so I I I think those are some of the things that we can do to help with the, with the formatting and letting you know what changed. Give you the old, let you know where everything went or how it was addressed and also give you a uh, equivalency table, basically showing. Here's your old numbering system and here's where it fits into the new numbering system.
That's excellent. I know that would be a great help. Um, Rats, I had something and it came and went. Um. Oh, nuts. Oh, I remember. So the 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 categories that you went through in this, in this overview. Are those categories all inclusive of the things that the two bodies need to consider?
No, our 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 next, our next slides were were uh, the the policy questions that um. I have here, these correspond to your yellow boxes. The ones that we just looked at, I thought, and Erica, we we got together and we were like, these are the things that the council that. From based upon our our relationship with you and working with staff and working what we brought up and was discussed a lot at P and Z. This is the stuff that they're going to want to know. And so uh, so those were the the critical things that we thought you'd want to know about that. And then these policy questions, we have opinions on these policy questions and we'll tell you what those are. For for, and these policy questions are the yellow boxes in your document. And we have a recommendation, but we need to ask you, ask you your thought. And like I said, you don't have to decide today, but just to get the, get the wheels turning on, this is something we need your input on.
Well, let's just backtrack on a couple of words you just said, we don't have to or we should not. I need to to get some clarification that in terms of what the agenda says. The agenda says we're not going to take any votes reactions on these things, so.
Correct, correct, correct.
Uh, is strictly so that we make notes, we independently, each of us, each of us individually on the commission and council level. Look at these questions and in our next time we get together, then we're going to be talking about these things in detail. We might express some overviewing like a fifty thousand foot opinion on a on a yellow box.
Yep.
But not go into debating the efficacy or the essentiality of that particular issue just uh, for tonight. That's not our purpose tonight.
Correct, correct. And when we're looking at the these policy boxes, you may say, oh, well, you know. That's an interesting topic. I might want to know a little bit more about X, Y, Z or something like that. So when we have that second meeting, we could, we could, we could get you some more information if if that's something you would want.
Got it. Okay, okay, all right.
So it's really just to gauge the temperature.
All right. Well, I I I know I've I've dominated this discussion because my mind is running a hundred miles an hour. My mouth probably isn't keeping up with it, but uh, if anybody else have any comments or thoughts? You know, the easiest thing to do is is to wave your hand in front of the camera. Instead of trying to find the raise your hand thing down at the bottom of the screen. So anybody else have any, any thoughts before um, Danny moves on? All right, Daniel, let's let's uh, go ahead and move on.
Okay, so the policy questions and and I'll go through these and then we'll have a slide for for questions. Or i- if you want to mention anything while we're through this, just you do that as well. Um, so residential dwelling size. Uh, the question that that we we have for later consideration. Uh, this is on page five, five of of your current draft. And and I'll I'll have a couple of slides here that that really show page five and sort of what what we're looking at here. But what we'll ask is should we remove the minimum dwelling size from the zoning ordinance? And our recommendation is we we probably do want to remove that dwelling size. Because uh, we see that more and more as being removed from different uh, zoning ordinances. We think it's probably appropriate for you guys as well. Uh, there's also some potential fair housing issues if, you know, we're saying these homes have to be this large. Um, you know, that could be an issue. One ways that that some cities do address it, maybe we don't have it for single family and two family. But for multi-family, uh, as far as what's the average size of a unit, uh, that is still commonly seen on there. So so we can have some, some room for adjustment here. Uh, but we did receive comment to keep the minimum dwelling size. And so if you're looking at page five, what you're going to see here on on. All your zoning districts is all your zoning districts are going to have a one-page summary. And it's going to look like this, it's going to give a purpose statement, it's going to tell you the name of the district. You're going to see a graphic on the page here and it's going to have A through H on there. That it's all the dimensional information you're going to need to know lot with things like that. Uh, but here in the red box, we have minimum living area. And so the minimum living area uh, right now in this district is three thousand square feet. So the question that we presented to you can't, should we remove this? Our recommendation is I think you are fine uh, to remove this. I think it'd probably be a benefit to do this. But we've also received comments to keep it in there, so so I think that's something we need to take a look at. This is what it looks like for a single family. When we're moving to a duplex, uh, you know, we do allow single family in the duplex district. So we could have a one thousand square foot for a single family, sixteen hundred square feet. If it's a combined duplex of the whole building would be sixteen hundred square feet. And then we'll get to more of our. Yes, ma'am.
You make the, you make, keep moving. You said, I think it would benefit you. How would that benefit us? To do a what, three thousand square? What benefit to the city does that bring?
You you would, you'd be letting the 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 market sort of dictate what what the housing size should be. So there could be some really good options for for some smaller type units in certain locations. So if someone.
The neighborhoods would want that. Right? Making an assumption there because that that's still no benefit to the city.
Well, I I think, because we could look at it as two ways, we we could look at it as a benefit. Like this would be an encouragement for people to to redevelop, to provide some opportunities in there to take a look at and see. Uh, okay, I don't have to, if I'm in the SF forty three, I don't have to have three thousand square feet for my house. I could have a two thousand square foot house. Uh, so we would just say the the market would decide that. We've had other cities that that were sued over their minimum house size on there. So we we just think as as a matter of moving forward, it would benefit you from less exposure. Um, to a lawsuit and then also just letting letting your 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 market sort of decide that. Because most of what we're going to see is 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 infill as far as as our redevelopment. So most of the land use patterns are already set and and that's one of the things we could take a look at. But that's why we're bringing up the question because if if everyone does not think that that's a good idea.
Daniel, you're throwing out statements that are not necessarily accurate when you say it benefits the city. Bob, are you finding a lot of people are suing cities because they have a minimum living area?
There, uh, to Daniel's point, a lot of times. Home sizes were a way of excluding smaller starter homes. Which have uh, certain income levels were being excluded systematically. Um, I think that's less of a problem for Duncanville than it would be for a city that is rapidly growing. And requires larger house sizes. So it's, you know, it's ultimately a policy decision, but what I think Daniel's saying is sometimes. In the past, cities have been sued uh, requiring house sizes as a way to exclude certain kinds of housing. And so it's probably a less of a concern for you because you do have infill. To Daniel's point, if the market is uh, we're trying to redevelop part of the town. And it had a minimum square footage, you might get a very nice product. At two thousand square feet for say, some of our, uh, someone like myself who needs to probably downsize from their current home. To accommodate their living and and keep people in town from and keep them from moving to Roberson Ranch. Or Del Webb product somewhere uh, and allow that flexibility. But, you know, ultimately, that's policy decision that the city has to make. Thank you.
Yeah, I I did hear about uh, with Sunnyvale on uh, the size of the lot area that they had lawsuits. But I haven't heard uh, on cities on the living area. And I think you're probably exactly right in Duncanville, uh, I don't. Uh, that's really an issue with us.
And you have a very good stock of of smaller homes. And so I I think it's probably less of a problem for you, but to Daniel's point, it may be an infill situation. Where if uh, you were to adopt something, it would exclude maybe very nice housing. Uh, with all the amenities that new home buyers demand in homes, you get value, but sometimes not the size. So, you know, those are debates that you and your colleagues have to have along with P and Z, so.
And I think, and I think we should at some point, I don't, I don't, I don't take on the thought of. Uh, we don't have it now, so let's write it down because we don't have a problem. Uh, I think we 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 plan for it and write it as if it would it would come. Versus having it to come and then all of a sudden you're stuck with the with the policy of of. There's no minimum, now you have smaller homes. As you just mentioned, attorney, if you drive around certain parts of our city right now, there's parts of development that we wouldn't want to see again. Uh, because it was just badly thought of. And so that's why I think the policy in that case should already have be written in case something else happens. It don't, you don't necessarily just wait until it says, you know, I'm already built out, so it's not going to happen to me. I think it could happen. So you you write the policy, but just for those cases.
Well, market is written. What they're saying is to make it less than what's written.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I don't want it less. So I'm saying.
Okay, okay, I'm with you.
Yeah. Yeah, Monty, I know Monty had your hand up and we're also getting into debating the issue now, which we don't want to do.
Hey, Mayor, Mayor, we're not debating, we're having.
Well.
Yeah.
Good and shouldn't do, and that's what we don't want to.
Yes, we can.
You're not, you're not voting, but the debate's healthy for this to move on.
That's right.
The issue is you're not voting on it tonight, but the input I think is very valuable for our consultants to keep this process moving forward.
All right, Monty.
I think it's, I think uh, our consultant is right on this. I think it's a huge benefit to allow the market to do this. Just because we we do zoning doesn't mean the market's going to meet this. And there's a lot of really expensive houses that are being built these days in many cities all over that are a lot smaller. Because the family unit has changed. In nineteen seventy, you know, there was, you know, seventy percent of our homes were, you know, were family homes now. And by the year two thousand and thirty, that that percentage is going way down. Because of lots of baby boomers, lots of millennials being single, you know, you're you're going to miss out on quality things, in my opinion. You know, by not letting the market do this. Hey, I'm giving my opinion, Johnette, don't shake your head at me. I'm giving my opinion. You gave yours. And I I didn't say one word. I'm just giving you my opinion.
I didn't say one word.
Okay, anyway, I I think it's, it's, I think it's, I think it is, it is, uh, should be a market condition. And I think if you look at some of the best practices in the country right now, that's what's happening. If you want to look at people that are doing zoning, the way we did it in nineteen seventy, you'll keep it like it is. That's my opinion.
Well, I think for everyone's benefit, and I understand what Paul is saying, probably the best thing for our consultant to do is hearing this. Is to give us some pros and cons. Uh, and and to give us that to all of us, uh, you're hearing what you're saying, you know, why, what is the pros of of removing it? What are the cons of removing it? And then each of us can individually decide that and next time we get together, we can have a discussion. Uh, more about what we feel about that. Uh, for me personally, I'm on the fence, you know, and I haven't heard an argument on either side. That convinces me to go one way or the other at this point. I'd look for some pros and cons from our consultant to hear that and to brief it out.
So I would like to hear from what other cities are doing it and then why they're doing it and what's what the kind of, what the demographic shifts have been. And I think our consultant can give us that, those facts and that how many, you know, less and less cities are building these big houses like this anymore. And I'd like to hear some of those kind of consult.
And there you go. That's the kind, that's the kind of input that I'd look for from our consultants on pros and cons. So we can, we can uh, take a look at that. Uh, Mr. Harvey, I I see that you came off, um, well, you enacted your video. Did you have a comment?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we've got you.
Good. Uh, I'd like to um. Uh, I'd like to express a point of order between the exchange of uh, Monty. And Councilmember Jamison, I distinctly heard Councilmember Jamison refer to Monty as a baby. And I think that's judgmental and that's not the type of discourse that envisioned by our current rules of procedure. Thank you.
Yeah, what a.
Um, City Attorney, it's been a while since I have looked through uh, the rules on. I think if I, I'm going to have to depend on my inadequate memory, but when a point of order is made. Uh, there needs to be a vote taken by the council on the enactment of that point of order or not. Can you please advise?
Point of order uh, is made to re, to raise a parliamentary uh, point. Uh, the mayor has the right to make a ruling on that and I would recommend to the mayor that we move on. Point noted.
And um, are the civility of the conduct of our council is important, as is the professionalism. And as the point of order did not address the actual conduct of in terms of procedure and term, how things are conducted. Um, I would accept City Attorney's advice. Uh, at the same time, uh, please advise all of our city council members and those on P and Z commission. That we will continue to conduct ourselves professionally and civilly.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, uh, moving on, Daniel.
Okay, so we'll we'll have a pro and con list for uh, minimum living area.
All right, thank you.
Uh, garages was something else that that was brought up as being, we wanted to get your your thoughts on. And uh, so once again, this is sort of just uh, food for thought. And uh, should garages be required for all single family homes? Our recommendation is that we should require single family homes to uh, have a two-car garage. Uh, that's also the building officials uh, preference on there. We can for, if we're looking at patio homes or maybe zero lot line homes, some of those smaller products. Uh, still requiring two off-site, uh, two off-street parking spaces. And having uh, at least one of those be an enclosed space. So you could have a one-car garage for maybe a townhome product or or something, something like that. And but as long as we are making sure that we had two off-street parking spaces. Um, so once again, the, why is this sort of an issue? We could create, you know, once again, redevelopment if uh, you know, some of our s- uh, older sites are somewhat smaller. So if we're wanting to see redevelopment on there, would would a two-car garage be a prohibition? To to encouraging that redevelopment for the patio home and zero lot lines only. Not not for our regular single family homes on there. Uh, but we did receive a comment and support for for requiring garages. So so we definitely think we're on the, everyone's moving to the to the same thinking that garages are, should be required. But, you know, do we have any exceptions here for, you know, some of these other product types on there? Or do we want two-car garages?
This is new construction only or existing?
New construction.
Okay, that doesn't say that anywhere on here because I'm thinking of, we have a lot of homes in our city. That the garages have can been converted to living space and carports constructed in front. Um, so we need some specificity here. I would, we might have that there.
We 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 can clarify that this is for new home, new home construction. We, we, we can clarify that this is for new home, new home construction. Okay. Uh, next, next one that we had was.
I have something, sorry, sorry. I would, I would just agree with what you first said. I, I would think that if we're going to do something like this, I mean, a lot of times there's some very handsome looking products out there. They're done with, uh, like really nice carports and stuff that are open. And in fact, I think they're cleaner looking than the ones with garages that don't get used for parking spaces. And I think that there's good ways, if you can do it architecturally, uh, with the, with patio homes, zero lots that make them look better. And I can, I know examples and I know you've got them too, that look better. Again, again, we're talking about, you know, we're talking about products that are changing in the future. They're not like we, we've had them in the past. And so I would like to see more, you know, product, what it, what that would look like.
Yeah, in fact, I, I know my neighborhood, uh, there's a very, very nice home and it has a gabled carport. And that's very, very, it's, it's beautiful in fact. Yeah. So Don, did you have your hand up? No, I'm sorry. Okay.
And we can get some images and for, for our, our next round of discussion for these and do, do a pros and cons as well.
Good, thank you.
Okay. Uh, moving on to, uh, landscaping maintenance. And this policy question is really focusing on who's responsible for maintaining the landscaping. Uh, the current ordinance specifies that it's the owner, tenant, or the agent, maybe there's a management company is responsible, uh, for that. Uh, our, our recommendation, and, and this is also just a enforcement building code, you know, who, who are we sending the, uh, notice to? Uh, but to, we recommend that it's going to be the owner is who is responsible and who we'd be addressing in the zoning ordinance, saying that the owner is responsible for the landscaping and maintenance. We're trying to also tie this and treat it in the same manner as we do screening and permeable pavement sections that the owner's responsible, uh, for the maintenance of this. So, and we see this as, you know, it's just in the lease agreement between the owner, the tenant, and if there's a management company, uh, running the site, we're just, we're just sending it to the owner to, uh, get that worked on. Yes, sir.
Yeah, Bob, our attorney has a comment. Bob?
Yeah, we've had a very difficult time with a lot of code enforcement that might include landscaping as well as maintenance issues because we have absentee ownership. And so I would like the council to at least hear from Mr. Ramey. I know that we've been struggling with this over the last two years. And so we do have a fair amount of rental homes in our town and it has been a problem in order to get code compliance by not having the tenant or the management company, which is routinely said that they don't have to because they're just the management company. And we've had some code enforcement problems, Daniel. So, uh, while I, I don't disagree with your recommendation in certain incidences, uh, we have had those problems and I don't know if Greg, if, if Mr. Ramey wants to weigh in on that. That's just the benefit of our problem. Again, this is a policy issue for the council. And of course we will do whatever the council wants us to do, but I'd be remiss in not pointing that out. Thank you.
Well, how would this possibly conflict with a, the agreement between a landlord and, and a tenant to where the landlord requires the tenant to be responsible for landscaping? Uh, what you're saying is that the, any code problems would go not to the tenant, but go to the owner of the property. But it would still permit in the lease agreement between the tenant and the owner to have that responsibility falling on the tenant. Is that correct?
Yes, yeah, yes.
Okay.
And this, this is Greg. I mean, and the main is, is we have multiple situations where, um, we do abatements. And at the end of the day, all abatements that are unpaid, uh, when we send the invoices end up, um, turning into liens against properties, which directly affects the owner. And so, um, I mean, that's really where we're going with this. I mean, obviously in the lease, the owner can say, hey, you need to mow the lawn. But, you know, what we end up doing anyway right now is sending tickets to owners and sending tickets to, uh, tenants for landscape maintenance or if they, you know, they keep their yard junky looking. But at the end of the day, when we mow the lawn on their behalf, um, because for, you know, they failed to do it, it's the property owner that's getting the lien.
Yeah, I, I think that this ordinance is just reflecting reality. I mean, whether they have language in their lease that says the tenant is responsible, the city's position will be, we don't care. Ultimately, owner, you're going to be responsible for maintaining your landscaping as Mr. Ramey mentioned, then if we didn't take care of it, we'll take care of it. And that's the reason that this is being brought forward. Just, it's just bringing clarity to an existing condition.
Got it. Uh, Mr. Pena, I saw your hand up.
Yes, sir. And it goes back from my previous experience. I was a registered accessibility specialist. So T D L R would require the owner to be ultimately responsible for accessibility issues. And the reason I say this is it can all be tied back to the owner. And the tenant, well, his agreement with the owner, that may be existing, but it always came back to the owner because ultimately whatever they did with the property, if there was any debt lien or any other liability applied to the owner, that's how it was enforced. You could always trace it back to the owner. And so coming from that perspective, I think it, it would be probably better if you put it back on the owner and the agreement between the tenant and the owner, that's their own issue. But in terms of the property itself, if T D L R chose to handle it that way, it was for a reason.
Okay. Well, Daniel, there's another case where we need, uh, some, some information, uh, to help guide us in, in this decision. Uh, I saw Greg Zilka and then Monty. So Greg?
Uh, can you define for us? I don't know what a T D L R is.
That is the Texas Department of Licensing and Regulation. So it goes from whether you're a harbor or if you're, uh, an accessibility specialist. If you're doing commercial, your, your property has to be accessible. Um, they cover, I believe even elevators for that matter.
Okay. Does that answer your question, Greg? Okay, Monty?
I think this is a good, good, uh, rule here. It might get our city looking better with landlords have a, maybe a more of a responsibility to do this. You know, landlords go to sell in these houses. They get to closing. They want to argue with the city. You know, that they didn't have, that they didn't mow them. And I think this helps, this helps tremendously. You know, know who to, who to go after. And it's ultimately the landlord's responsibility if they're going to rent their house out to make sure that their tenant mows the yard anyway. It probably has it in the leases. So I think this is a good thing to go after the land, on the property owner.
Yeah. And, and another thing, it ties into our registration, uh, process that we've enacted as well. Probably good idea to put that in there. So, yeah, Daniel, if you could give us, uh, some little more information on that to, for our consideration, appreciate it.
Will do, will do. Um, and then that, that was just an example of the, the, the text. Okay. But, um, okay. Next one, um, I'm glad to hear this is sort of a, a recently touched on, uh, topic because the, the zoning ordinance, as it's drafted, does mention these, uh, food trucks, um, on page thirty-two. Uh, we did add a mobile vendor use and this would be for, you know, the, the food truck that you regularly see, you know, at a, at a, at a park or an event or something like that. Uh, these would be allowed for, uh, by S U P, uh, that type of operation. S U P in the non-residential districts, so it's not in the residential districts. But the other item that we did add was a food truck park use. Uh, this would also be done by an S U P. So it's not allowed by rights. You'd have to come and get a recommendation from P and Z and also approval, uh, by the council. So you could sort of take a look, see if the operations, uh, make sense. Uh, we have all the necessary things as far as electrical outlets, seating for people to, uh, get their food, sit down and eat somewhere. So what we, we'd see is should, the question we really have for you for food for thought is, should the zoning ordinance include additional standards for food truck parks? Uh, we would say yes, we, we should have some standards unless the council and P and Z think that food trucks are best handled by a separate ordinance and not in the zoning, because it can be done through a standalone ordinance. And, and we wouldn't necessarily see these in the zoning. So, so that, that's, that's one thing to consider, but, but we can regulate these through the zoning unless you prefer to, to do it some other way, other way. And then we'd, we'd work on those standards and bring them back to you if you thought it was something that was appropriate for the zoning.
Well, Daniel, this is like, uh, you've asked a question. It can be yes and no. This, um, you say yes, unless, uh, and, and that throws it into more of an open discussion thing. Uh, so here again, I would say give us some pros and cons and to why you feel it should be or why it shouldn't be, you know, what are the benefits of having another ordinance? Or what are the detriment, what is the detriment of having another ordinance? Or is it more efficient to have a, this is owning ordinance? Um, now there's another, some pros and cons. One of the things that we talked about that I'd like you to do some research on, I remember this when we had this food truck park discussion was, uh, permeable surface. Uh, if there is, if we have a food truck park and someone owns some real estate and they want to do a food truck park on there with an S U P, um, does, uh, does the ordinance in terms of vehicles being parked on, it has to be a, uh, oh, what's the word, Greg? Conclave? Yeah, slab, yeah, versus, versus, uh, permeable, you know, crushed granite or something like that. If we could get some input on what other cities are doing, uh, so we can give that some consideration, I'd appreciate it. Uh, Monty, did, did I see your hand up, Monty? Or Mark? I'm sorry. Mark.
Here from the P and Z commissioners on that as well. I know we talked about it as you mentioned. Yeah. Well, I'd like to hear some commissioners speaking and their thoughts on food, the food truck piece and what they've been kind of discussing.
Anything from, uh, P and Z?
This one, maybe like, okay, Betty, what, Betty's right here.
No, uh, Greg Zilka, I see you open. Yeah, go ahead, Greg.
Yeah, I, I think in the current COVID situation, who knows how long this is going to last. I think with social distancing, I think it's a good fit right now. But having a place where it's acceptable and, uh, it meets those considerations, um, you know, I, I, I think that would be a fit for our city. Um, so that's just kind of my input on it.
Great. Yeah, Bob?
Yeah, Mayor, and i- if Daniel might break that down into what I would call a food truck park, I agree with him, that definitely needs to be a zoning consideration versus maybe a one-time use where there's a special event in the community that might be handled through a separate ordinance because they'd still have to meet all the standards for food service. Uh, that's just a thought on my part. So there's a little of both. Uh, if you have a food, food truck park, I think that obviously deserves, uh, zoning consideration, but you might have a special event like, uh, Duncan Switch or something like that where you'd allow it down in, in, uh, in, uh, downtown district for the day. Could be treated maybe differently and you could have both. So I, I just mentioned that for your discussion without a recommendation.
Got it. Okay. Yeah, Monty, I saw you unmuted. Did you have a comment?
Yeah, I, I, the only, last time when we talked, we were going to study this, not only just food trucks, but food trailers and then not only in just parks, but maybe in empty parking lots next to buildings. Like what, um, you know, we see in other places where they use them to fill in a truck. A trailer may be used that's set up, may be used to, to be a, uh, basically in a vacant lot in your downtown to fill in some gaps. And so not just, just the food trucks, I would like to hear from our consultant about several different things, what other places are doing, like, um, Fayetteville, Arkansas. I mean, you can see what they're doing in their downtown with trailers. And they're very, they're very well done. You can do them. They can be done really bad and they can be done right. And so there's a difference, you know, you got to be careful what's dumped on the street and how the power is hooked up and where the toilets are, you know, there's a lot of different things that need to be looked at.
All right. Okay, Daniel, you got that?
I do, I do.
Very good, good. Great input.
Okay. Uh, and then also, uh, for, for, for later discussion, the proposed rezonings. Because like I said, when we were looking at the map at the beginning, mostly every, none of those zonings changes except for potentially these, these three areas. And still for, for, in the beginning of this conversation here. Um, and we can sort of see the three areas once again. Uh, currently here on the left, uh, along the frontage of, uh, twenty, we're having downtown Duncanville a- as shown. And the consideration is for rezoning that to local office and, and retail. Uh, the thinking behind that was, once again, um, once you cross Camp Wisdom, uh, is it really sort of the downtown feel that we're going to have? Mostly because the new development is just going to be on the frontage of, of twenty. So that would be some of the consideration that we would say is go ahead and, and rezone this similar to what we have on the south side along Camp Wisdom. And then our vacant area right here would be local, local office and retail. So that was area one. Area two is expanding the downtown Duncanville district to the east to Merrill Avenue here. Uh, because we would see that there would be some opportunities for just some, some, some natural transition, some more opportunities for development the further we go, uh, to the east with some of the structures over there. So that would be number two. Number three is, uh, showing this area right here in, in our, in our green box. And I'm highlighting the red that you see on the screen, which is local office and retail and making that into just the single family seven zoning district because that's what we mostly have along here. It's a little difficult access with, uh, you know, just, uh, right off Main Street. So, so having access to these properties, uh, it's a little bit difficult. So it sort of made sense when we were taking a look at this previously to consider this area as possible SF seven zoning instead of local office retail. So those are the three that, that we're sort of taking a, a look at. And so those could be for discussions just for, for future. What do we think along twenty, expanding downtown and then further south on Main Street? Having some more, um, single family residential rather than, than the retail commercial type.
Are those articulated anywhere for the reasoning behind that, but behind those three?
Uh, we can, we can put something together, like a, like a list on there.
If you, if you could, I'd appreciate it. Uh, going back to number two, uh, if I remember correctly, some of our thoughts on that one, uh, was positive because of the term walkability. Uh, the more individuals that we attract to our downtown district, they're walking or they're riding their bikes and so forth. Expanding the downtown district, uh, eastward into that area would improve that particular, uh, aspect of our downtown district. It would be more positive. So yeah, if you can articulate those kinds of things and the reasons why you're recommending those, it'd be helpful. Yeah. Monty, did you have your hand up?
Oh, just, just quickly, you know, I'm, I'm in favor of expanding the downtown district into the neighborhoods and to even more, but for sure that if we, if we hadn't had that downtown district zoning on the, on the freeway right now, we would have us a really ugly, another cheap hotel there. Because we had that downtown district zoning up there, we were able to hold off. And I think it's important that that, that piece connects to the, to the Main Street, the downtown district because that piece could actually look like downtown more in its new development instead of another cheap hotel or another pad site on the, on the freeway. And so that's just my comments on the two. On the third one, I don't have a comment. So.
Okay. All right, Daniel, you got that input? Thank you. All right.
Okay. So, so next steps brings us to, uh, where we're going after, after today. Uh, if, and, and this is at y'all's discretion. If we could put together our, um, we'll put together our pros and con lists for the, for the things that we've talked about here. And if you guys are, are ready to have another joint workshop on, on October nineteenth, we sort of have that date set aside. If that needs to be another date, uh, that's fine. And we can continue to talk about, uh, the items we, we've listed. We can also take a look at, we. We can also take a look at, we talked about, um, providing you some better tracking with your current ordinance and where those sections go. So I think we could put together something that will help, help you see here's the current section and how it's is treated in the new, new ordinance. And then also we can give you another document that's really just a table that you can see where it is in your old ordinance and where it is in, in your new one. So, so we, we, we think that would be helpful, uh, to do that. And we, we'd like to do that and see, see if that works to help with the connecting the dots on there. And so we'd have that information with you, uh, for you as well. And whether it's October nineteenth, or if there's a better day that works with everyone, we, we can, we can look at that. Cause where we go after that meeting is still to be determined, uh, by, by this group. And are we ready, once we get this document and a consensus on this format to present to the public? And we could talk about different ways about how to show that to the public. We were mentioning with staff earlier, there could be ideal instead of, of course, you know, a year ago, we thought, you know, no one knew about COVID and public meetings would still continue in open houses. But now maybe what we can do is try to have this, uh, we could do like a online meeting format that maybe is open for two weeks. Where, where once again highlighting the, these issues for, for the, we can have the whole document up for anyone who wants to take a deep dive into it, but maybe having some videos and some, some chances for people to provide comments to a response, an explanation, so the public can see that and, and maybe provide some comments that way. So, so that was one thing we're talking about, but at our next meeting, we can talk about ideas, how we would want to engage the public again. Now that we're closer to, to having a draft on there and differently than how we've done it in the past. On this project.
What I thank you, Dan. What I'd like to do is turn this over to Greg. Greg, if you could take a, maybe a stark, you know, a poll of, of your members to see how they think about an October nineteen workshop. And then I can poll our city council members to see how, how we feel about that as well. But I'd like to hear from your folks first.
That, that'd be great. Can I ask a quick question of Daniel before I go to the poll?
Oh, sure.
For the October nineteenth meeting or whatever meeting. I think one area that I'd like to have some more dialogue is opportunity districts throughout the city. How they fit in, how they don't fit in, where, where they're going, uh, what the council members feel for the opportunity districts in their area and get some input on that. I think that's one thing that comes to us that would help us have some better guidance. If you feel that's appropriate.
And Greg, you're talking about the federally described.
Our ten, uh, opportunity districts that we've identified in the comprehensive.
In the comp plan, yeah, the federally identified opportunity districts are a whole piece. Which way you were going on? Okay.
Yes, we, we can have an analysis showing where those ten, ten districts are and how they're treated under the proposed zoning to meet the intent of the opportunity area.
Yeah, cause I, I, I think we're, we're very landlocked and there, there's a, a lot of potential for those areas and how we want to, you know, long-term look at those properties. I think that's the more need to have on that one area. And Mayor, your, can you rephrase your question again that, would you want to poll on?
Just poll your, your folks about, um, an October nineteen, another joint workshop on the nineteenth. And, and Freezing Nichols will have, uh, input for us on, on everything we've covered tonight in terms of pros and cons. So we can continue further discussion. So just poll your folks, see how they feel about an October nineteen meeting.
Very good. Commissioner Turner?
Well, we've got a lot of talking to do in the next two weeks. Today is the fifth and we've got fourteen days.
Would you be available?
I should be available.
Do you feel it's too soon?
Well, like I said, we're going to have to sit down as a group and go over some of this stuff, you know, clarify our thoughts on it. So as we're going to have at least one additional meeting just for us with this timeline.
Well, not necessarily, George, because it would vary with how quickly Freezing Nichols can get us the inputs that we've been looking for as we've discussed. So I'm looking at the next one as using the input that we get from Freezing Nichols based on the issues we've talked about tonight, they're articulated.
That's, yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm looking at. It is going over the stuff that Freezing Nichols gets us between, between now and the nineteenth. That's what I was thinking about.
Okay. I should be available.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Commissioner Pina?
Kind of along the lines of Mr. Turner, I hear you, Mayor Gordon. Nineteenth available, and if we're going to look at those things that are brought back to us by Freezing Nichols, um, open to that. There are some things that I did have on my list here with specifics to the code that were presented. I just had some additional questions and being the newest, I guess, member, uh, wanted to get some feedback. But I don't want to slow progress. I will be here on the nineteenth and available.
Okay. Um, please reach out to city staff on some of those questions. Thank you. Commissioner Colberth?
Yes, I'm available on, uh, for October nineteenth. Plus, uh, want to make sure that in that food truck, our deal, that we have some type of temporary permit for special events.
Yes, thank you. I should be available, so that's a yes. Commissioner Shaw?
Yeah, I'm available.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner McBurn, did you attend?
And? I'm here, I'm here. Uh, I should be available, just so you all know, my husband is on hospice right now. So if anything happens there, then I would not be.
Totally understand. And Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yeah, I can, I'll be available.
Okay. Thanks, sir. So, um, Mayor, as the sign, we all should be available. Unless some unforeseen situations arise.
Okay. Uh, go around the table, Joe. Vera Cruz, Joe? Oh, there you go. Okay. Yeah, Joe, what do you have? About the nineteenth? You're good? Okay. All right. Uh, District two, Don?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I'm good to go. God bless you, Janet McBurn.
Hey, uh, Monty?
Yes, I'm available.
Okay, Mark? Okay, Jeanette? Jeanette?
Um, I, I wanted to ask also about the zoning, the commercial zoning that you showed, because the map that you're showing us is different than understanding the verbiage in the book and, and how far it's going back like, um, of the one before.
That's two.
No, the map. No, no. The one you showed with the whole map. There. Okay, on the north side of I twenty, the purple area. How far does that go back? I can't see because this is really timing.
Oh, sorry. Uh, the, the purp, the purple area, uh, it, it starts on twenty and then goes all the, all the way to the, uh, to the city limits to the north with the, uh, with the industri, that's industrial zoning.
Okay. Well, there's houses in there, so you're saying that you're suggesting that this be zone over the houses as industrial?
I, I believe that's sandwiched between Main Street and Duncanville Road. So, yeah, I don't think.
There's houses in between there.
Between.
Woodhaven.
Between Duncanville and Main Street?
Yes.
They would still be conforming.
Main Street on the light purple, the yellows. Woodhaven is to the east of the light purple. That is, um, all those yellows in the very.
Yeah.
Corner, that's Woodhaven.
And, and we can, we can also take, take a look at this, we can, we can blow it up so everyone can, can see. Because I, I do believe we didn't change anything in as far as what we're showing here in this area. Now, once again, we, we combined our two commercial districts together. So they would just show us the light, lighter purple, uh, there. But what we could do is, uh, we can bring a map of this area and also, also an aerial for, for discussion if we'd like to talk about this area some more.
Absolutely want to talk about this area.
Okay.
Okay. And how about the nineteenth, Jeanette?
Well, like I said before, it's, it's, uh, kind of a tough time for me, but every, everything before the third, but, uh, I, I don't know if I can, I can come or not, but it doesn't matter. Go ahead.
Oh, okay. Patrick?
I'm good.
All right, I'm good. So, all right, let's go ahead. Paul and, um, Daniel and Erica and Kristen, uh, and everybody just mark their calendars for the next joint on the nineteenth in place. And Daniel will be depending on Freezing Nichols to, as soon as practicable, to, to get all of us those pros and cons and additional articulation of things. So we can have a pretty good understanding of, of how we need to think about these things. We'd appreciate it.
Yes, we'll get to work on it right away.
Okay, Paul, any, uh, any final comments, any last inputs?
No, Mayor, I think that's good. And I think too, um, just as everybody is beginning to study the book we're waiting for Freezing Nichols to provide the information. I think the nineteenth, we need to be able to, uh, well, it's hopefully if we're ready to start knocking some of these policy questions out. And, you know, this, this was some good dialogue that we had tonight. But as we make progress, it's, uh, it'll be the time to begin to make those decisions. Not voting, but providing ultimate and final guidance so we can start firming this up.
Good. And Greg, Rami, any final inputs, thoughts?
I, I don't have any, uh, sir. I'll be, we'll be ready for the nineteenth. And if there's any other questions, um, between, um, that you have later tonight or between now and the next meeting though, please, um, send them to, uh, to us so that we can then forward them to Daniel and Erica so that we'll have those questions ready to be answered at the next meeting.
Okay. Uh, just out of curiosity, Mr. Ruig, um, since you are the, the certified expert in planning that it's with us at the moment, what are your, you have any closing thoughts for us?
I, I think my thoughts is on, on the zoning ordinance update and it's just kind of rehashing. And I had some notes I wanted to, uh, just, you know, send, tell off to the group is, I think a lot of the things that are in here are very good and will help as far as the usability goes for, um, citizens or people that are wanting to do business in Duncanville, uh, that'll, that'll help them tremendously. So, um, I understand it's, you know, it, we're kind of taking an old ordinance and, and giving it a big refresh where things will look different, but I think that's a very, so the broad or the overall, um, you know, mechanism and on which way this is going, we're adding a new use chart, new zoning map that's more consistent with how you see it in other municipalities. Those are all positive things, uh, that I, that I've, you know, noticed in, in this, in this draft. There are some, some policy issues that we'll, we'll need to talk about some more. We've had, you know, some discussions with the P and Z in our workshops to kind of, uh, hash out some of those policy issues. But I understand, you know, what we've talked about today is a little bit larger. Another larger, uh, version of, of looking at those issues. So I think we're headed in the right direction. And I also did want to just make a note on the food truck, uh, ordinance. Uh, I, I think we're, we're, we're planning on bringing that back to council. And I, uh, through our staff discussions, I, I think this is something that'll likely come before the zoning ordinance is, is finalized. But we can certainly, uh, be sure to incorporate, uh, those edits in the ordinance as well as in, in the, the zoning ordinance update. So, um, you know, that, that'll be forthcoming as well. But overall, um, I think this is a step in the right direction for Duncanville to, uh, become more user-friendly for, for their, um, zoning and building permits and, and things of those nature. So I think we're, we're moving in the right direction is what I would add to the conversation.
All right. Thank you very much. Uh, so, um, as Chair of the P and Z, Greg, uh, any closing comments from you?
Mayor, can you look at discussion, item number four, discuss implementation calendar? Have we covered that? On our agenda?
Oh, I need, I'm looking at, you know, I'm looking on the PowerPoint, I'll see if that.
Oh, sorry. Yeah. Or was it just implementation calendar?
Oh, well, you know, looking at those last two bullets on, under phase three, I think that takes care of item number four on the agenda. It's still up in the air. Get accomplished, uh, at the next joint workshop. So if it's agreeable with everybody, uh, I can say, you know, we have had some discussion on that, on the implementation calendar. It's, uh, still undecided.
Okay, very good. Thank you, sir.
All right. So I thank everybody for your participation and for your inputs. It's been a very powerful and informative meeting. I've, I feel, Daniel and Erica, I feel a whole lot more comfortable now than I did at, at six o'clock. And, um, so I think I've got a game plan in my head and where we're going to go with this thing. And I think we're going to be, uh, much more efficient, uh, in terms of being able to actually lock some stuff down at the next workshop. So thank you very much. With that, um, I'm going to adjourn our city council meeting at eight thirty-one. Greg, it's up to you to adjourn yours.
Uh, we'll go ahead and item number five, adjournment of the planning and zoning meeting at eight thirty-one as well.